This conference will now be recorded.
Counsel, we have a lot to cover tonight. We want to be generous with the... So feel free to ask questions and we're going to make this presentation. Josh Nelson wants to make a, say a few words to the council when we get to that point.
Okay.
All right. So tonight, we're going to go through our annual budget work section. This is really the meeting that's set aside every year for solely to go through some specific items, probably the bigger decision items within the budget. And so I've got a short presentation here and then the worksheet like we did last year and we'll get to that, who to go through and make some of these decisions. So the presentation is divided up into four different sections. First, we'll go through the summary of the revenue and expenditure trends of primary government services and the resulting fund balances, kind of taken from where we left off at the last meeting. If you remember, we went through some of the major trends there. And we'll just hit a real brief summary of that, just to remind everybody of the foundation, if you will, of what we're making decisions from. We will review the draft budget in summary or in the totals. And then really from the meat of the issue or the meat of the meeting will be the number three there, where we'll go through several specific items for council discussion, deliberation, and direction on where you want it to be. Just along those lines, I did take a look at, you know, just for, just to give you a kind of a feel for the budget in total, how large the items are. There's, I printed out the, a report that shows each individual line item within the budget, and it's a 300-page report that has about 3,800 lines. I'm not wanting to go through 3,800 lines here tonight, but what I tried to do is I distilled that down to some of the more discretionary items and some of the bigger items for you all to make a decision on. This process has really been developed over the last few years here since I've been here. And we, I like to think that we get a little more, a little more, a little better at it every year as far as bringing out the items and a little more transparent for the community and, you know, involving council more and more on the individual decisions, the right decisions, if you will, and not bogging us down too much in the vast details that is included in the total budget. So, but of course, you know, that's always up, you know, there's, there's a lot of room in between 3,800 lines and I think it's about 160 lines that I've spent in the discussion tonight. So, you know, if you want more detail, less detail, please don't hesitate to speak up and give me direction there. And then finally, we'll bring it back and do kind of a summary and a real short, real brief synopsis on what's next and where we go through here. So during the discussions, during the deliberations tonight, I'd like for us to consider three guideposts that we'll, we will watch closely. First, the ongoing revenues versus the ongoing expenditures along with their trends. And again, we spent a lot of time on this last week, kind of going through those to put it in focus for you so that we avoid the suspense issues for getting the budget out of structurally balanced. And then also the projected fund balances with emphasis on the general fund, making sure that we're staying within a healthy target there. And then finally, third, making sure that we're on a customer focus. And it's awful easy when you're working in a government situation to get focused on how much money do we have to spend and where are we going to spend it. I suggest, and I spent a lot of time talking about this, is really looking at it, turning that on the other side and looking at it from the customer standpoint, what does AIC live value from or what does AC value in, and how do we, where do we find the funds to go deliver what we want? So, oops, hit the home button here. So draft overview considerations, and again, just kind of during the last meeting, we talked a lot about the general fund balance was in the target range, but must still watch sustainability. The sales and use tax is our major source of revenue, as we talked about. That was 38% of our total ongoing revenue and, I'm sorry, 47% of our ongoing revenues in the general fund. So it increases the historic average, if you remember that chart that I did, over the last 11 years, it was compound rate at 1.47% on the average. So if that increases the historic average, that represents a 0.69% increase in our total revenue, while wages represent the majority of our expenditures, that's 74% of the general fund. So if those increase at 3%, which is historically what we've been doing, of course, we're talking a lot about a lot more for this year, but just looking at it historically. And no other line items of expenditures increase, which we know is not realistic with inflation that goes up here in Europe, the total expenditures would go up by 2.2%. So again, if you just look at those two phenomenons, with revenue increasing that 0.69%, there's a gap in trying to cover the increase in expenditures of 2.2%. So, and again, looking at, we have to keep up with market wages, we know that, so we have to look at service levels over time, otherwise we'll get us into a spending budget issue. As discussed in the last meeting, this year is particularly challenging with that great recession, or great resignation. I updated this, but this is similar to the chart, or it is the same chart as what you saw before at the last meeting a week ago, but I did do some updating. And right now, the draft is at 64% for the fund balance over ongoing revenue. And so again, a healthy fund balance, about where we really want it to be, within our range. And then those highlighted items we'll go through here, again, just real briefly. The general fund is in, within the target fund balance range, however, we're dealing with the great resignation. And just as an update to that whole discussion, I did see over the weekend where the state has passed legislation and the governors expected to sign, to where the state of Missouri has given a 5.5% COLA to all state employees. Now, we've also put another twist on that, that they are doing a $15 minimum wage for all state employees. That's on top of what they did, which was a 2% increase that they did at the beginning of fiscal year. So they're coincidentally, or maybe I'm just lucky, they are coincidentally right on top of what I'm recommending to council, a 5.7% COLA and a 2% step increase. So at 7.7, they're at 7.5. Capital improvement fund balance is moving from 16 million to the 4.2 million to the 1.6 million in the draft. That 1.6 million is a little bit higher than what I showed you at the, at the last meeting last week. And we'll, we'll go through what those changes were, but I took some additional items out of the draft and left them for a decision that we can't put back in, but I felt like that $1.6 million is probably where we need to be, or about where we need to be. But the move from the 16 million to the 4 million to the 1.6 million really is just the effects of the HELOC community center, where we borrowed the funds in 2020 and then the construction through 2022 using down loads restricted funds. The visceral business and cultural district, the fund balance was moving from 101,000 to 138,000 to 55,000, and that's again, essentially spending on this reserves on primarily facility grants and alley reactivation. Midtown special allocation fund moving from 511,000 to 41,000 is the advance that we did in the streetscape, was really $825,000, but we wanted to accelerate that to get it all done in FY '21. So we advanced the funds to the Midtown Special Allocation Fund, and that's paying the capital through the fund.
This is a quick question, we're in the Midwest, what is the... 30... It's great, again.
Oh, April. Yeah, 23 years. Oh, April. Yeah, 23. We can look it up to make sure that it gets back to...
So it's 23 years.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm pretty confident it was 2008 because we did it right before the recession did and the sales tax thing. And so we were, we were planning on sales tax increases and, you know, just really an act of... Continuing with the overview consideration, the special revenue fund for transportation has built a fund balance, and we used much of that for the hanger purchase, if you all recall, last year, and we're paying that back essentially $200,000 per year over five years. We potentially advanced a million dollars out of the capital management to make that purchase happen. And then you'll see some specific investments, equipment investments this year as it's a decision item, and hopefully we'll have some good discussion on that later. Water pollution control, again, looking at that, we won't, we didn't bring up any specific items, but just looking at that in total. We are, still have, basically where we've reduced the operating loss and we do have an operating cash flow positive, however, we're not generating reserves as fast as the capital needs coming on. And the recent rash of failing pumps are, really highlight this issue, and we had to spend down reserves this year just to get, to keep pumps operating. And Brenda will attest to that, it seems like about every, every week, there's about to reduce pumps that fail. And then, of course, the treatment plants, replacements are required to meet the DNR requirements. And so we are proposing, and this fund, we are proposing the healthiest increase, a 10% rate increase that went out in the public hearing notice. And so there will be a hearing on this March 21st, and then, and then that will be ready for council approval, considers approval of the budget and approval of those hearing rates. And again, I, you know, nobody likes rate increases, but I, it sure looks like that's where we need to be to continue that. And if not, then again, we're going to have to do large increases later, and, and those are left out. It ends up about a $3.375 per cus, for the average customer, right, per month, as you might remember the numbers right. The water department, again, we did some significant cost reductions through bringing the management out in it, into the city hall, city hall, and we eliminated several positions. You'll see where we're recommending adding one of those positions back. But that allowed us, there was scheduled rate increases that were supposed to take effect due to the money that was borrowed in 2018. And so that allowed us to delay them. And then this year, again, we're looking at a nominal increase of 2% for the water. Sanitation in solid ways, this is the one, again, that we continue to struggle with. A few years back, we moved it out of the general fund because it was being supported by tax dollars, as opposed to standing on its own like a enterprise fund should. We've made several changes. We picked up, we implemented the automated trucks, and that allowed us to reduce staff. We picked up several customers and added the second and third carts, which makes for a better mass of the fees with the level of service. We also eliminated the commercial waste that was operating, commercial service, which was operating at a loss. And also, we were at the point where if we were going to continue it, we're going to have to dispose the equipment because it was wore out. So it would have just made a bad situation even worse. So we just eliminated that, that as a service, and allowed the private sector to pick that up. We changed the pickup on demand, which now the fee is a complete increase, and that allows us more roundtis to be, and makes us therefore more efficient. And then we also encourage, continue to encourage people to do containers instead of the whole waste pickup, setting it out on the curb, which is not only more efficient, but it looks better for the community without those big piles of trash. And that, again, is one of the big changes, or big pushes this year, is to push for more of those containers. Yes? The, we eliminated the curbside recycling and, again, waiting on the market to return. That allowed us to reduce staff and also fuel and wear and tear on the vehicles. So when the market comes back, we have to make sure that the market is going to cover what we have to add back in as far as the gas and fuel and wear and tear on the vehicles. And until that point, then I don't recommend it going back to recycle because it's just adding cost to a situation where we're already, already upside down. So what we've recommended in this budget, or what this budget's built around, is a rate increase of $1.50 per month per customer. And then we also suggested to increase the senior citizen discount by a dollar, so the senior citizens, which are more likely to be on a fixed income, their increase would only be 50 cents per month. Let's continue to bring to sustainable. We've got past losses, which really represent a long from the CIP and other funds. We still have an unrestricted unusable, or usable fund balance or deficit of $1.2 million. So we, we've got to make that up somehow, some way, either transferring government funds, tax dollars to cover that, or get it to where it's creating more revenue than the expenses so that it can make up and create some reserves for when the equipment works out. So any questions and comments on any of that so far?
Have you seen or heard anything about, anybody thought more about what this board could do, especially what could do? I mean, we could make plans to, we could see a whole lot more in place, we could see a lot more issues, but just continue to look.
Yeah.
How to plan for that? I mean...
Yeah. You know, that's where, you know, we're blessed with fund reserves so that we can take away the steep approach and not, you know, taking the stirrups reaction to, to that. But that most particularly, you know, I did that slide on, you know, on the national impacts and where we're expecting the GDP to go and inflation and all of that. And, you know, the experts are still saying that they're, they still expect the economy to expand, they just expect it to slow. They do believe that because of the conflict and disruption in Ukraine, they do believe that that may slow the Fed's on raising, on tightening of their monetary supply. So they may, the last, last DOI I heard was they were saying that it was a possibility it was going to be a half a percent raise in the discount rate in March. And now, you know, the common sentiment is that it's probably, that's probably out of question, they're probably only going to do a quarter that they still plan on in this quarter. And then wait and see on the, what this affects, you know.
The fuel costs, it skyrocketed and it's kind of a double edged sword.
That's a window. Yeah, they expect the inflation, the conflict to have put pressure to reduce inflation, but for energy prices, it's going to, that sector, it's going to increase. So... We did, I'll give you an example during our cohort going into the, we had a budget at 2% sales tax increase to generate the revenue for our budget that year. So we had, at that, probably, I can't remember exactly, we had a meeting, and we're concerned that we adjusted back our negative budget lines.
I think that's one thing I'm saying, I mean, I'm going to be a little bit more conservative than I was, unless we can adjust it throughout the...
And that's what we did, we did that, exactly what we did. And we came in at, what, 1.7 of the sales tax for that year.
Yeah.
So mid-year, we added several of those things back. So we went through, you know, a lot of those areas that we had high costs, I just like overlay from programs we, we could... Thank you. And there were several things, too, that were just by the nature, they, they were delayed, like any vehicles we had budgeted were delayed because we can't get them. Okay. Does someone answer the question? Yeah. I think that helps a little bit. Okay. I don't know if you all will remember this spreadsheet, that this is the spreadsheet that I set up that kind of goes through, and it's a working model, so it's intended for us to make changes. It's intended for, to make it easy for you guys to see immediately what the effects of individual decisions would be. So across the top, this will be frozen across the, the top of the screen here, we start out with the revenues over or under expenditures, so in the case for the general fund, we start out with that, that summary that I showed you, that it's $731,000 increase in fund balance for the year. I added this column this year, the ARPA restricted funds, our restricted balance, which is the American Rescue Plan Act Fund. And we received 2 points, almost $2.2 million last year, and then we are expected to receive another $2.2 million this year. But then we're using basically $1.4 million of it that are allocated, allocated, so I'm taking out the additional reserves, otherwise it looks like our fund balance is way healthier than it really is because those funds have, we want to set aside and use specifically what we're going to use those for. That ends up at a $9.7 million fund balance, and which is roughly 66% of the, the ongoing revenues. So that is, again, well within our target. Our target is 35%, 75%, it's at the upper end of our target. Very healthy, very, very prudent, just for those discussions that Councilman Bliss just mentioned, the uncertainty that we're having. So what, this next line item, as we make changes down below, this number will update, and it will be the increase to the expenditures or, or, or decrease to the expenditures, or, I'm sorry, decrease in the revenues. And, and then we'll have an updated net and an updated fund balance. I also put on here the targeted fund balance at 65% of ongoing revenue, and then this number here gives you a running total of where we're at in comparison to that 65%. Going down all of these, I will have the description, the item that we're talking about in our strategic planning. You ranked 13 different items, and it will show you the ranking, if there is an item that was ranked, the amount that was requested or proposed in the budget, and then the amount that's included in the current draft. And then the working changes in the amount included in the FY '23. And then we have little checkboxes so that if we, if it's included, not, or if it's included and we don't want to include it, if we uncheck it, then it automatically updates the, the numbers up above and we can see a running total. Then we have, some places will have comments and notes. What I propose, which, that I'm, it's up to you all how you, how you best want to do this, but what I propose is if I could just kind of go down through all of them and kind of explain, and we ask, answer, or ask questions or talk about and debate as we go down through each of these items, and then we can come back through for a decision. But I think it's better if you get kind of a feel for what the total list is before we try to make a decision on any certain line item. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. So the first item is the sales tax, sales and use tax increases. What I've included in the draft is 2%. Of course, we spent a long time in the slides last week going through that, and I recommend that we probably can look at 4%. And so I put in this for a decision item, another 2%, and I went ahead and checked that, so that's part of this $300,000 that's already in there.
Oh, it's in? So it's 4% now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, in the draft, in the 731, it's 2%, but then I've added this 135,000 by checking that box.
Okay, okay, I got it, yeah, all right. I understand.
So in this number, it's 4%. Property tax increase, I put in the draft a 2% increase. Personnel related costs, again, for the general fund, that's 74% of our expenditures. So I kind of list out several items here and, and talk about them here. The health insurance, I projected a 5% increase, but then the way that this works now is it really only affects the fourth quarter, so it's not a whole lot of funds. But just to show you there, that's $20,000 in the general fund. Health and wellness incentives and screening, this is an item that Shannon and I have been working on with our Blue Cross Blue Shield. There is, the Blue Cross Blue Shield has several things, but one of the particular things that they have is an opportunity for what they call a healthier use. And under the healthier use, you can go out and you can actually do things that are targeted to make you healthier and thereby reduce the burden on the health insurance, the loss ratios, and earn points for that. And so what we're recommending is that we set up a system to where if you earn 3,000 points by October 31st, you would get a $50 gift card for each employee that earns 3,000 points. Any employee that earns 5,000 points, then they would get a $100 gift card. This is partially offset with that health and wellness incentive reimbursement from the insurance that's $10,000, because we can use that if we, if we structure this correctly. The other part of that is that we've also budgeted for, oh, shoot, flu shots and biometric screenings and those kinds of things, to bring those in town. So that's really what, what represents that $16,000 or a net of $6,000. Workers' compensation potential increase, that's a small amount because our, our experience mod has been really low this year. But then our experience that so far this year has not been good, so it may be short-lived. We may be talking about that next year and with a bigger number. Finance, as I mentioned, when we brought in the management of the water department, we eliminated three employees. And we, after that dust was settled a little bit and there's been some additional growth, we believe that it's prudent to add back one person. We're, we're not, not able to keep up as well as we really need to be. So Don has recommended to add back one person, and I concur, so that's included in the draft. Dawn has recommended to add back one person, and I concur, so that's included in the draft. Fire pension transition, transition to loggers, uh, and contribution to the unfunded liability and the legacy plan. As you all remember, that was rated number, ranked number one out of 13 in your, um, uh, in your strategic planning meeting. And as I mentioned then, and, uh, will say again, that $250,000 is really a missed moment, um, because it's, it's money we're going to have to spend anyway. It's, it's a $4.2 million of unfunded liability that's got to be paid, whether we go to loggers or not. My recommendation is, is when we go to loggers, it just really stops the bleeding, but it also makes us have to, to fund that sooner. So, um, it makes us pay it back sooner. Um, I did put in an alternate to fund, uh, to, to, uh, basically amortize the unfunded liability over a longer term. If you all wanted to only make $125,000 contributions to the unfunded liability, then we could, uh, we could do that.
And loggers would go along with that? I mean, is that?
Well, this is the, loggers, this is the legacy plan. This is, you freeze the plan and you move all the new, all the employees to loggers, and the frozen plan still has to be funded, because.
I thought loggers still was going to.
Loggers won't be able to take that over until, uh, it'll be at least three years before they can be able to do that.
Okay.
Before they can take over the management, like they did the police department. So for at least two to three years, we're going to have to do this on our own. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but we're in a, we're looking at inflation. Okay.
And then, uh, in the fire department budget, Chief Irwin has, um, recommended to add additional overtime for an automatic call-in of four individuals for every time there's a structured fire. Uh, he had proposed that at $8,000. It is not included in the current draft. Also included was some additional overtime to, uh, accomplish in-house hosting for all department training and also some meetings at $22,500. That is included in the draft. Police frozen pension contribution towards the liability, this is the old legacy plan under the police department, uh, and that's a $546,000, uh, contribution that's partially offset with the property tax. And I, I put in there in the comments that this is now in loggers, so it, we have to make it or pull out of loggers. Uh, so that's non-negotiable, but I did want to leave it in there so that you all can see the, uh, the relative cost of it. And, and also my opinion on, you know, uh, that if we don't do the, uh, the fire soon, that's the level we're going to be at. I mean, it's, that, that's how we got in the trouble with the police pension, with, uh, the, we let the bleeding continue too long. The police special operations overtime, uh, this is a program we started on almost four years ago, five years ago, somewhere around in there. I think it's been very effective. Um, Chief, Chief Irwin, I don't, uh, you know, this is one that I, and I think the way we manage it is, is very effective, and, uh, it's, it allows us to do special operations and target specific crimes that we're seeing, and, uh, and it really pays primarily overtime for the expenses of that. I did put in here an option, if you wanted to, we could fund that at a, at a lower level, um, so then we can look and see what that does. Going down here, sorry, uh, police recruitment incentives at, I'm sorry. Uh, police recruitment incentives ranked number four in your strategic planning at 30,000, and is included in the draft. Um, Shannon had put together a proposal to add a safety manager, and, uh, she's, uh, also put together a memo, uh, you know, basically justifying it. I think it all makes a lot of sense. Um, it, uh, can really reduce our work comp cost, and that's really how it can pay for itself over the long term. Uh, I just believe right now with the uncertainty of wages and the uncertainty of the national events that we talked about, I think that, uh, that's one that I think we really should take a hard look at and, and potentially do next year, but I'm not recommending it for this year. City health inspector slash department, created department, that was ranked as number 13, and so therefore is, uh, since it ranked the lowest, I have not included that in the draft, but again, we can add that if you all want. For wage rates, um, the normal step increase, uh, for the general fund would be $185,000 and a COLA, and I split this out between police and fire and then the other general fund, uh, but that's what a 1% COLA would be. Then also I went through, as we talked in the, uh, last week, I went through, and I think we need to increase that to where we can get to a 7.7% overall increase, and there's the numbers there to, uh, to add that. They are not currently in the draft, and so I am recommended, I have already checked those, and that's really what's creating that $300,000 there, uh, offset partially with the added, uh, sales tax.
I'm going to stop you before you go further. So I, I, I like what you did with the COLA, and I'll split that, but I want to go back up and ask a question, and I'm sorry, Phil, when I wasn't sure, when to stop it, but for the squad plan, the, the fire added overtime for auto call for four fires, the, we need that overtime to do, go to the squad plan?
No.
Can't remember how we.
This doesn't, this doesn't affect the squad.
All right.
The squads are, are lower down. This is, what this is, if I understood, um, Chief Irwin, I'll let him, him.
I, I made a presentation, and I'm trying to get back to it, what he said.
No, this wasn't part of the strategic planning presentation. This was really through our individual years. Pardon? Yes, um, basically what this is, is, is when we have a structured fire, uh, what I.
So currently, and I'm sorry, I've been sick all week, so, it's not COVID, I test it every day, I swear. So, so currently what we have is we have an overtime budget that we use if we fall below minimum staffing, we bring them in. What we've never had in the past is if we have a residential structure fire, um, bringing a crew in to help backfill stations or coming in to help on that fire. We've always just taken that out of our operating overtime budget for calling, for, uh, for minimum staffing or those kind of things. So in years past, it's always been, shouldn't we call somebody in? We probably ought to call somebody in, but we're running short on, you know, we're running a line on our overtime budget, and we need four people to come in and, and man a staff. So what we, what me and Chief Shaw looked at was, is putting in a, a line item in our budget for, we average, sorry, we average 40 house fires a year. Of those 40 house fires, 20 to 25 of them require additional personnel to come in. So that's kind of how we figured, four people coming in for those fires, they'll either put out the fire, roll hoes, put up equipment, get equipment back in service, or bring in to man another truck, that if we're out working this fire and we've got all three trucks committed, we have another truck available to respond to calls inside the city, whether that be medicals or fires. So that's why we set that line item in there. Um, it is not directly tied to the squads, but it does help with the staff, not the staffing, but if we, if we hire people in to do that, it kind of goes hand in hand with that as well, because it's the same thing.
To what point is that triggered?
Um, depending on when myself or the deputy chief gets on scene, um, if, if this fire is going through the roof and it's a two-story and it's five degrees outside, we're calling another four-man crew, pretty, pretty quickly. Um, if.
But it's, that's.
Or if we have a second fire come in, or if, quite honestly, some of the legacy houses that we have in Sideria, if, even if it's a 60-degree day and we've got fire going through the roof, we're probably going to call in a second crew, another crew, simply because that's going to take a while to put out and it's going to limit our resources. But, I apologize.
Uh-uh, it's fine.
So what I'm trying to do is limit the exposure to the city for, for, um, medicals and other fires that are coming in.
And it's, it's not really on parts, it's, you know.
So anyway, that's what, that's what those funds are for.
Right. But it's not going to prevent you from making a call, if you have to make a call, whether this is in or out?
I mean, this, this is the added amount of what we're already doing.
Yeah.
So yes, this would be, once we have a fire, they would automatically call them in, as opposed to waiting to see if we needed them.
So, in, in theory, when the, when the first truck gets on scene and they lay a line in and they've got fire coming, it's myself, the chief Shaw, and I'm on scene, the battalion chief's going to call and say, go ahead and activate, start calling, uh, a support crew, person crew in. Then now, myself or the deputy chief have to get on scene, see that we're, we're taxed and that we're going to have to do it. So that's, it's just a.
Does it increase?
It's an increase, is what it is.
Okay.
Thank you for the water, by the way.
Long as we're on it, I would make the recommendation we add those in. We're doing it now. How, how do you want to do it?
Yeah.
Back.
Okay.
Okay, that's fine.
I have a question on the, uh, safety, safety manager.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I'm sure that all departments have safety meetings, or we should, if we don't.
Mm-hmm.
So is there a need for a safety manager?
The, the safety manager would just add more coordination to it and, and, uh, really take a look from a, and implement safety programs that would be aimed at, you know, increasing our safety and reducing claims, and do, uh, more of a consistent claims, uh, investigation, uh, accident reviews, to see how we can avoid those from happening in the future. But yeah, we're, we're doing all of those things now, it's just, uh, a safety manager would make that more consistent and, and a more consor, concerted effort.
If we had a discussion with our carrier about this?
No.
Our insurance? Yeah, I mean, do we actually have documentation from them that we've got, what, I guess we have EMR, and do they use EMRs for us?
Yeah, we've got an experience mod of .86, and they did a presentation that, you know, if you reduce that experience mod to .5, it was like $300,000 or something like that, if I remember the numbers.
Well, but you're not, it's going to go down, Mike, five, it goes down four or five points a year, so we're not going to go from .86 down to .5, and that.
No, and, and like I said, our, our experience this year has been above that, so, uh, I'm afraid we're going in the wrong direction. Uh, it's been recent years of 1.1 experience mod, and so we, we've worked hard, we've got it down to a .86, but like I said, the, the claims have been, are you interested in this?
Are we concerned we don't have safety plans in place? Or do we have, safety plans need to be modified? I mean, where are we with regulations?
Each department really does their own safety plan, and that's what this safety manager would do, is, is be able to work with each department. And that's part of the concern with, uh, with, with doing it, uh, for us, you know, the, the safety for, uh, the street department is a whole lot different than it is for the police department or the fire department.
Yeah.
And so having one person that has the expertise to, uh, to, to look at a safety program for the police department and the street department, that's, that's pretty special.
I have no, somebody like that exists.
Yeah.
Do we really need that individual be, to be full-time? Can they be a part-time, since you already have something in place with all of the departments?
Really, you know, part-time help would be good. We really need to look at our safety policies as a whole and kind of have them reviewed and looked at. I did have a really good conversation with MEM, um, about where we're currently at, what we're doing, what we may need assistance on, you know, some areas of improvement that we need. Um, and like I said, usually it starts off with your safety policies. Arlene and them did a fabulous job many years ago, putting something together, but it, it's about 233 pages. And so it's like with anything, when you have 233 pages of anything, no one's going to read it. Um, and as Mr. Shaw had mentioned, you know, each department has their own way of doing things, so a lot of the departments have their own policies. So it's basically just kind of taking everything, looking at it as a whole. Um, I'd really like somebody to be able to come in and focus on the preventative side of things, you know, looking at preventative maintenance, you know, looking at where our claims currently are at, how we can prevent, you know, injuries and accidents in the future, looking at certain things like that. And then really the other main importance was the accident investigation. You know, really having somebody that can go out, look at all of that, take the pictures that we need, do the investigation that we, and somebody that's not in the department that can really look at it from a different perspective, so.
Really a consultant, if you will. I mean, specialists that can consult with each department and, and help them guide that process through, because everybody else has their full-time jobs that they're looking at.
Correct.
It will be a, have more focus.
Right, and we do have a safety committee that meets once, once a month. Arlene and I, you know, really spearhead that. Um, and each department comes together and we talk about, of course, what they've done in their department, what topics they've reviewed that, that month, and go over any accidents or incidents, and really, like I said, try to see what we can do i- as a whole, and, you know, get ideas off of each other. We actually have in the upcoming one, um, for March, the fire department's actually going to bring in their simulator, and we're going to do fire extinguisher training. So it's kind of trying to see what resources each department has, because they've kind of been so siloed, and see where we can utilize those, or, or again, the fire department's helped us, as well as the police department, with doing AED and, and CPR classes where we haven't necessarily, it's been a while since we've done it. So it's like I said, having somebody kind of spearhead all of, all of that.
I guess my thought is, you approve $60,000 for a safety manager this year, bring them on, you're actually creating a budget, you're not going to let them go after a year, but if, if it's the safety manager, but if it's safety consulting, I, I'd almost encourage you that there are good consulting firms that can come in and, I mean, from department to department to department, you don't need an elaborate safety plan, you need a simple plan that people will buy into, and then you can compile it, but, you know.
Mm-hmm, and even working, you know, I, I've really tried to partner up with our insurance company. We, you know, we were trying to have them come out and actually do safety walkthroughs and safety inspections of each department, kind of show the safety committee, you know, how to do that, so that we can, again, also do that amongst ourselves with the safety committee. Um, but unfortunately, of course, with COVID right now, they're, they're restricted.
Are you saying you, we, this isn't a position that would be funded annually? This is a dollar amount for consulting, or?
No, this would be for, technically at a full-time position, not necessarily a consultant, is what I was recommending.
I, I guess I'd encourage you to go back and, and start with consulting before we add a manager's position that we, we fund year in and year out.
Thank you.
That's really hard to tell. I mean, it's, oh, I, I think over the long term, yes, it would, it would pay for it, so, um, you know, but that's only if you're successful and reduce you want.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I mean, that's, but, um, you know, that's one thing that's hard to prove or disprove, that you're really a safety manager.
And really with the.
How do you know when you, how, how do you know when you've avoided an accident?
And with the experience mod, it's over a three-year period of time, so we're really probably about even four years out before we would see if there was any positive change from today. And that's the recommendation from our, our, uh, insurance company as well.
Which, they'll do some, but writing those policies is enormous, that. There's really just not enough stat time right now.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay. We ready to go down into non-personnel?
Yes, sir.
And again, we can come back up and go back and forth, but, uh, just to give you a flavor.
uh, the branding messaging, the advertising buys, uh, uh, that came in at number ten. Again, we had, um, at the last meeting, at last week, we had Calas come in and they presented us kind of what more details, put a little more meat on bones, if you will, of what that funding would buy. And they proposed two budgets at a hundred and fifty thousand and one at seventy-five, and what's currently in the, in the draft is the seventy-five thousand dollar option. There was also, uh, branding messaging and marketing consultant, consulting that was, uh, proposed at twenty thousand dollars, and that is not included in the current draft. Uh, it's just really included now in that seventy-five thousand dollars, um, overall branding message. Retail recruitment consulting came in at number eight at sixty thousand dollars, and that is currently in the draft. Annual MML conference for the council and, uh, and administration at fifty-five hundred dollars is currently in the draft. The MML legislative conference for council is, uh, you know, I believe it's, uh, I, I, I can't remember exactly how I did the numbers, I think it's three people staying overnight, but it's all council members, uh, registration. At fourteen hundred dollars, that's currently in the draft. Um, to continue with the title work, to clean up titles, uh, to, uh, get properties clean, clean titles at twenty-five thousand dollars is currently in the draft. Pioneer Trails, those dues are currently in the draft at seventy-seven hundred dollars. That's the regional planning commission.
What do we give to this?
Um, uh, we, we last year discussed about gift like that. We did, uh, we did camp it two years ago. Last year they came back and asked us to give them another try, and so we added it back in the budget this year, mid-year. And, uh, uh, and, uh, I, I tell you, it, uh, basically, uh-
We assure you.
We, we got some good meetings and some good things going on, uh, through Dawson's work on the staff committee. However, when it came down to the end of that, we still didn't get anything funded, so yeah, we got our priorities addressed. And they, they listed high in the priorities, that's the first time I can remember we were number one and number five, I think it was number one and number four. Anyway, we had two in the top five of our priorities for the region, which was the first time I can remember in doing that. But it didn't end up in money, uh, and I don't know, Brenda, you've got a different, uh, different view on that. Beyond that, we asked them to help us with the TDU grant, they said, well, it's too late, we really don't have the time to do that, but-
We keep it in there, and it's, and it's, and it's, we have accomplished that, or is it, is it?
I would feel better asking him that question directly.
Would you? Do we have to be a member of Pioneer Trails or does he have the representation of the tech?
If it doesn't result in any money, you know, so.
We just need to carry the other.
Yeah. Brenda, do you have any input?
I wish that, uh, Pioneer Trail accomplished what their mission and goal are stated to be, but so far I have not seen anything made available to the city of Tidelion that we didn't obtain ourselves.
The fire staff vehicle was ranked as number seven at forty thousand dollars, and then, um, I, basically that's replacing what we're currently doing as a car allowance, so I just put in there that, basically I budgeted for this to happen at mid-year.
Josh, is this, is this what you want to come up with next?
No.
Hey, I want to roll you back up again to, uh, I'm sorry, Kelly, um, scroll back up a little bit, we have to do, uh, keep going. Uh, oh, the, um, the branding messaging and, uh, but the retail recruitment consultants, sixty thousand, I wouldn't, if, if, people that came in and made a presentation, I, I wouldn't, I'd almost rather move money, not prioritize that and, and, and fund more of our branding messaging. I throw that to the council, uh, wasn't that the group that says that they made a presentation, that they came, and it ended up they'd had one or two customers in Missouri? They only had a few clients in Missouri and-
I, uh, I, I did not like the group that, that came, but-
I wasn't impressed, but I, I do like the idea, uh, or the, the concept, and there's other firms out there that does, does this. So what we talked about is that we would, uh, set aside the budget, but yeah, we would bid it out, we'd add it. I, I, I'm a little, I was, I'm not real-
And actually, there's-
I'm not really impressed by that particular group.
That group, we met at, uh, MML.
Right.
And, uh, the, the principal of the, the firm is, I, I wish he would have came and done the presentation. He was, he was much better and much, made a much better impression than the guy that had-
In five minutes, we saw him do a presentation. Yeah, that was a good part. Is there something that we can put out the bed and get it encouraged into, in terms of, maybe they can add a proposal?
Just to leave it, the idea is great, I would agree, but not necessarily that.
Yeah. You know, I would say through the year, if, if we do that, and I don't know if this is what we kind of talked about, this is amendments, that of an adjustment or whatever, I'd adjust it up to, if you couldn't find somebody to impress with, the retail recruitment consulting, I'd amend it back up to more of the branding messaging. Is that something we can say, or do we have to do it now? I don't care if it's on that line, on line fifty-one, so to speak, on the spreadsheet or move it back up, but if you can't-
What's the council's wishes, do you want to take this out and then pull this budget?
I would, I would suggest, my, my, I would even need to like, move the fifty dollars in there.
Yeah, I, I, I think we need to leave sixteen, everybody, the idea of this, for trying to copy, but if it doesn't work, then it could have still, it's still in the general plan.
Yeah, so we could make an adjustment, yeah, all right.
Move it in towards the end and move back into the range, so that would be hot.
There's a, there's a, there's a lot of, right? Yeah, okay, that's, that's, that's a good example, we talked about that.
Okay. All right. So would Ryan? Uh, okay, so, so the fire medical UTV vehicle, that was part of, um, Chief Irwin's strategic plan at rank number eleven, which, um, ranking low, I, uh, uh, did not include it in the draft, but then since then, uh, Chief Ward has come up with an alternative that I think is, uh, is a, is a workable solution that, that gets us most of the way there, um, in, in what we were trying to accomplish, and utilizes some funds that, uh, uh, that really has not been put to full use. And basically that's the opportunity to sell Bahama, which has actually already taken place, I think, uh, Kyle Harris has helped us and worked with that with, without a commission, and, uh, uh, helped us get that sold for eighteen thousand dollars. And, um, uh, and we can take those funds and roll back into basically in, uh, multi-use UTV that is shared through the PD, because a lot of what he was talking about was the same functions that Chief Irwin was talking about, where we have the parades and the events downtown, and it's hard to get in and out of those crowds and those kinds of things. And if we have a medical emergency or a police emergency, uh, or just taking supplies in and out, a UTV would be very handy for that. And, uh, and so then, uh, Chief Ward has found, located, uh, a unit that we could purchase that would fit, uh, fit that use, and then put a bed on it, much like, uh, what Irwin was talking about, so it'll get close to that emergency medical unit, but not quite all the way there, but it will, um, um, be a, a, a good alternative, if you will, a cheaper alternative to that. The other thing that this, uh, UTV would be used for is that it, we, we would, uh, buy it equipped with a snow blade, and so when we're, have a fence like we've had here recently, um, getting in and around the parking lots and the downtown areas and into some of those tight places where the dump trucks hard to get in and out of, um, we can, uh, utilize that to, uh, uh, to help with the snow. I leave anything out, Chiefs? Okay. That's a nice gesture, Chief. Fire, uh, they had proposed the E hydraulic, or hydraulic hearse tools, um, and, uh, that's a fifty thousand dollars worth of equipment. And, um, he had put in his notes that he would try to get a grant for it, but at this point, we, we have it budgeted as, included in the draft as, uh, the total cost of fifty thousand without grants. And I, I don't know if I can do it justice, but basically this is, uh, equipment that helps with, uh, fire ex, our emergency vehicles or crap, car crashes, extracations.
We'll pick them up there.
Sure, if you can. If you have enough voice left.
And you have a wire.
So currently-
So currently we have, um, the Jaws of Life, which is a spreader, and then we have another tool, it's a cutter, and then we have a, a ram, it's a set of rams. So if the dash is something that's crunched out on you, we can use a ram to push it off and get off that. So, um, the current set that we have is eighteen, it's old, and it uses a port, portable hydraulic fluid, and so we had to fire it up, run our hoses to it, and use it to cut. What this set is, is, is it's an individual spreader, individual cutter, and individual ram, but they run off batteries, but our current, the two engines have, um, spreader cutters, what they are is it's, so it's a combination set, they're not mirrors powerful as the individual sets are. So an engine can get on scene and actually start working on a, a motor vehicle accident, while the truck responds over with the heavier sets and allows us to cut more stuff. So basically it's a high-powered set of tools that basically we don't have to have a port of power for with hydraulic, hydraulic fluid or gas stuff. Um, and they're battery-operated, but they do come with a battery that plugs into the generator. So if our batteries die, we can plug into the generator, run the tool, so it can run as long as we have gas.
Just walk over to the next item, the fire vehicle stabilization strut.
Stabilization struts, those are a new item, um, we have never had stabilization struts, um, um, in the history of the fire department. And basically what these do is if you have a car that is either on its side significantly damaged or on its roof, um, that car moves and it rate and it, and it shakes, it's dangerous for patients, it's dangerous for my people. Um, currently we carry four-by-four cribbing that we will wedge under a vehicle, but it is not the, the best alternative to keep a vehicle stable. What these struts are, are basically they come in and they, they wedge in and they're, they're basically like jacks. They jack the car and they basically stabilize the car to the ground, it keeps it from moving, keeps it from shifting and, and all of that. Um, it is something that we have never had, um, but we've had a lot of vehicles either on their side or on their roof that we've had people in that it's a very dangerous situation. So, um, we looked at this and, and we thought this was the best option for, for, for the department.
What, so I, I'm for that. Can I ask you what the Lexi poll, did you ask me, tell me too, what's the fire Lexi poll?
Yeah, the fire Lexi poll is, is the police system, or the police currently use this Lexi poll company, uh, that, uh, they create, uh, uh, policies that have, uh, that are basically experts in, in doing that, and they, they run the, uh, uh, run through the legal process and all of that. Um, I think it's a, it's a great system for the police department, and I think it's more important for the police department, uh, uh, since, you know, there's more opportunity for us to get in trouble in the police department, because they are actually taking away people's freedom and those kinds of things. And so making sure we have good policies on use of force and those kinds of things that keep up with the current legislation and all of that, I think is very important. Not that it's important for the fire department, I just can't, uh, in, in my mind justify the twenty-eight thousand dollars that it would take to do for the, for the fire department.
And, and, and we put that in there, somebody keying off the police department of having a vetted individual, vetted group coming in and, and establishing our, our policies for, you know, sexual harassment and, and how we operate and those kind of things. So that, that was the reason why we, we, we tried to put it through, through budget, with everything that's gone on in the past, we thought that it was somebody smarter than, than, than me, um, but we will, we will work on it and, and we will get there.
What's up with the fire update furniture, what does?
This is, uh, that was, I believe, uh, replacing the, the recliners.
Correct, sure.
In the coal stations, and then barbecue grill.
And, yeah, so currently the, the recliners in the stations that we got are, were purchased when we built fire headquarters, so they're eight years old, going on eight years old, um, they are starting to break and starting, and to fall apart is basically what they're doing. So, um, we, we requested through our budget to have those replaced. Um, and then the barbecue grill, um, local one oh three has bought the last couple of years of worth of barbecue grills, um, they're starting to get old again and, and starting to break down, so, um, it was my olive branch to, to purchase, um, grills for both stations.
And as you can see, those are currently not included. But do you all want to add those in, you can?
Well, you know I do.
See?
Yeah.
What do we have, still, we're still sixty-four, and what's the percentage now?
Oh, there it is, he's sixty-five, click it in. No, we're at sixty-three point seven.
Got a barbecue grill for the park?
They got to feed me something.
Don't laugh, we've had it on fire.
Oh, I- I got a guy right now in rural property, he's got the butt porch on fire.
Do you want me to stay or can I go?
I think we're, we're done for a while, anyway. Uh, a couple of things in the police department, uh, the police sergeant West Point training, our model for, in, in training, this is to, uh, we've had a, another sergeant promoted, so this is the training to go through that last year that we went through, the, basically you put all of your commands after. Yeah, twenty twenty-one. And, uh, so this was just to, to, uh, bring up to date the additional folks, and so we'll have to send them out, so it'll be more per person, but then, uh, the same, get the same training. Police investigations and homicide training, um, you know, Chief Ward, again, in his budget presentation, made a good, uh, good pitch for that, and, uh, basically he is really the only one left in the, in the station, or in the, on the force that has had formalized training in homicide investigation. And, uh, so we think that that would be good to put a couple, put a couple of our detectives through, uh, homicide investigation. The police drones, this is, uh, really to expand the drone program, it came in rated as number nine out of thirteen, and this is to add an indoor drone and a low-flying drone, and then the third one being just a real cheap training drone. Uh, and so that again is included. This is something that came up since the strategic planning, uh, is the idea to add control, crowd control barricades, and, and so we went down and looked through, these would be like the steel barricades that you see for crowd control. Um, and we'd like to see them painted instead of just, you know, galvanized steel. Uh, but we went through and kind of roughly priced out what it would take to go from down both sides of Ohio, from Broadway to Main Street, and came up with sixty-one thousand dollars. Uh, we originally stuck that in the, uh, general fund, but then later moved this to the CIP. So we'll see it again in the CIP, if you want to take it out of the CIP and put it in the general fund, that's the option, or, uh, if you don't want to include it at all, we can take it out of there, so, uh, but that's, that's what that one's all about. So, and then, uh, you know, that would not only help us for parades, you know, just to keep the crowds back from, on the parades, but then also, uh, you know, if we had any kind of riots or anything like that, we could use it for crowd control.
I just said, this is I, I'm the council, Dawson's clerk.
But these really look nice, I'm amazed, they had them in yellow and blue.
Okay. The non-lethal weapons expansion and the rap, uh, that came in rated number five and is included in the draft. The community development e-ticketing, we discussed at the last meeting, uh, last week, and, uh, you all approved the order of that, that's the budget amount that, uh, that is required for that. Community development promotion and events, this is a, um, a budget that, uh, Joey has recommended to help, um, with things like the shop local and those kinds of things. I can't remember what else was included in that.
Shop local, uh, gas, 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 um, small people in, but also citywide shop local.
And this would be on top of what we've got in the CPC. Uh, community development Main Street conference at forty-one hundred dollars is included in the draft. Rehang the downtown Christmas lights, this is no increase in the amount of Christmas lights that we've done, uh, that we did last year, but this is what the cost would be to rehang the ones that we did. National registered nomination, the Victorian Towers, this is the fifty-fifty grant match, and, uh, and again, you all have approved that, that there's the, there's the amount included in the budget. The light study to expand the three fifty-three to incorporate the downtown area came in rank number six and is included in the budget. Demolition of dangerous buildings, uh, hundred thousand dollar funding level was ranked number two and is included in the budget. Neighborhood revitalization seed money ranked number three, has been included in the money.
The demolition of dangerous buildings is back within her budget, or is that for outside contract?
This, well, I, it, it's the overall budget, it's, we, we do the vast majority of them in-house, but we still have to do the dump bills and all of that, so this is really spread that hundred thousand dollars more by doing that in-house. The cemetery, uh, replace the flatbed crew cab pickup truck at forty thousand dollars, and that is not included in the draft. Uh, there is an opportunity, uh, there's one in transportation to replace, uh, a, a truck there that we could possibly domino and utilize here in the cemetery, uh, partially because, you know, not to pick on the cemetery, but, uh, uh, that truck has to be less reliable or doesn't have to be as reliable as, uh, as some of the other trucks because basically it drives a block, uh, it's, uh, on a, on a daily basis. Uh, but the one that's currently being done is really, it's, it's worse. It was, uh, it was handed down from street department before and been used for several years, so, um, so we're hopeful that we, you know, get one somehow, some way to, to provide that function. Cemetery, cemetery sixty-four niche columbarium came in rank number twelve, um, but I, I did include that in the, uh, in the draft. Animal control e-ticketing, we talked about last week, and again, is included in the draft. Trap neutering release of the feral cats program, that ten thousand dollar funding to contract out to, uh, do the trap neutering release is included in the budget. Fleet maintenance, replace the lift, um, they have a hydraulic lift for lifts in the vehicles that, uh, I'm trying to remember that conversation, Brenda, it's, it's, it's starting to fail, and did it pass the last inspection or?
They told us that they were, would allow it to be used this year, but it was not passed.
Yeah. So, um, so that's, uh, replacement of that lift, and it's, it's going to a different style lift, that's a four-post lift, so it, uh, will be more functional and be able to do additional vehicles or do vehicles that we're currently not able to do. Um, the fleet maintenance replayer, the, uh, the, uh, building compressor at seven thousand dollars, and again, that's, uh, uh, past its useful life. And then, uh, the, replace the tire changer again past its useful life at, uh, seven thousand two twenty-one, this included in the draft. And then for cost sharing contracts, we have the emergency management, and, um, this is a share with the county and the state. Basically, the state funds a, through grants, funds a, a, a good portion of the EMA, emergency management, uh, uh, budget, uh, through the county, and then we contract with the county to, to, uh, supply the other half of that funding, um, that, that the state doesn't cover. That's about twenty-nine thousand, it actually goes through the police department budget, I didn't know why, other than that's what it was when I got here, so we just kept putting it through the police department budget. Uh, the joint dispatch agreement at three hundred thousand dollars, and I put a note out there, if we did take that out, we would have to add back the salaries for the, the dispatch, so, you know, I don't recommend that, but it's, uh, it's there if, if council wants to consider something alternative or something different. Scott Joplin rag hunting festival, that's ten thousand dollars worth of funding, um, we're hopeful that that will happen this year.
Yeah, they had it, we're meeting this morning, and since the, 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 et cetera, they're one hundred percent going for it.
Good deal. So now you have Pettis County Economic Development, we fund them at a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars a year, uh, and again, includes the same amount in the budget. Whiteman Area Leadership Council, I put this in two different line items, we have historically funded them at three thousand dollars. And last year, we did, uh, an additional amount to help offset the cost of, of housing studies. This year, I'm recommending that we do, uh, we put a challenge out there and we, uh, propose that we would increase that two thousand dollars to a five thousand dollars if the other communities would do the like amount, and, um, and so that's, that's what I'm recommending. Greenhouse support, we partner with the Parks and Rec to, uh, to offset five thousand dollars worth of the cost of operating that greenhouse so that we can have, so that they can, uh, do the things that they do, like the, uh, the median form there at Sixteenth Street and, uh, State Fair Bollard, um, and then also opportunity for them to do additional for, as we do the, the downtown development and those kinds of things, additional, additional plants, yeah, across the street here, that they do those, all of those kinds of things. The Fourth of July fireworks, last year, the last couple of years, we partnered with the Parks and Rec and, and helped offset five thousand dollars, uh, we recommend increasing that to ten thousand dollars, uh, that really only pays about, uh, a little over half of the, the cost of the fireworks, so.
Yeah, that's very good.
Yeah. And then the Christmas parade, uh, we, uh, contract out with the Chamber of Commerce, they, they, they really do all of the coordination and all of that, and we, uh, we help them with two thousand dollars offset.
The Christmas parade, last year, it was a KBR, uh, that we, uh, think I had, you think back to the fifty, it's probably twelve hundred.
No, that was, uh, I think what you're thinking of is, is the Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
And we did, yes, we added, um, um, funding to that.
Yeah.
That's in the CPC, and, but, but yeah, we may, I'd have to look back and, and remember where that was coded to. I'll look you up. Okay. Do you want to go back through any of these? You want to look at, are you happy with where we're at?
I, I had two items. One, uh, the branding.
Okay.
I, I like how we have that at thirty-five thousand.
Okay.
I had that as a business coming in this last week, or certainly give, they would like the opportunity to give us a presentation, unless they feel we're off that. Um, so it is an opportunity for that line, and I can just go out and bid, and so we want to, I think every turn of the business, um, 'cause I think that's possibly something that could come in under ten-five thousand. A lot of love and courtesy to us, to Mr. Sula, this last certification, right, that we could do a little help, um, and I think, uh, I think we could probably do quite a little more than ten-five thousand.
What, what do you think we can do in house?
Um, I think we can do strategy and planning, I think we can do the public relations side of it, I think we can do social media management side of it.
I agree.
You have?
You have, or, yeah, we help, who's doing it? I, we already have social media being managed, I mean, that's a smart approach. Um, and then public relations about monthly, monthly letter, I'm still confident that the Democrats, in case I, in case they're wrong, any, uh, any post that we make is changing with us, just really in the public, our own social media side reviews for public relations, when we step up to the public, that's used. Um, the strategy and planning, I mean, when it comes to the planning of the meetings, I, I maybe along with thinking, I think the, the meetings that were had that last year probably are things that we could have done on our own, we, we couldn't have had a public relations meeting here, we could have had a public relations or a tracking meeting at Convent Hall, and if we publicized that well, we could probably have had a clean shirt. They approached, they told us, that's something that we could have done.
The company also, they contacted me as well, and they really felt like they could get us a lot more, a much better deal and get us a lot.
Were you talking?
The town square meeting, and I, by the way, I'm saying that they.
Town square meeting, okay, I couldn't understand.
That's, that's the person that we should go with.
Right.
However, they're asking for a climate statement.
Right.
They're asking to give us a presentation of what they feel they can offer, and I think we owe them, or anybody who asks, uh, for this company to let, we should give them that opportunity. I like the higher end meeting, seventy-five, I think it becomes another that, when we look at different options, but I also think that the branding is something that we need this time around, that we should go after, and we should get the option.
I agree.
Sweetie? Uh, I certainly agree that, uh, town square should have an opportunity, and I'm not certain that, I mean, or branding is a done deal, isn't it? I mean, we're not gonna change the brand at this point.
Uh, Ross?
Yeah, so, yeah, I don't know, I'm gonna talk back.
George? Tina?
Give them the opportunity, they will have it.
So if you want to keep this current seventy-five thousand dollars in the budget as a miss, and then it can be amended, it's gonna come in, or whatever.
Yeah.
So you, and you want to maintain some of this love in-house?
I think a lot of it is already due in-house. You disagree? So what is, I don't think you got, I don't think you got the stack, and what you're thinking. I'm thinking we're already doing it, a lot of it's not on this scale. What, what, what scale is this going to get?
This gets to the outside scale.
To the outside?
We don't, frankly, have two people to cover this, and I think, uh, there's, there's one other side of this also, that you can be very careful with what we're doing here. I agree that we may need to take a look at the outside and other vendors along with this, okay, but there's going to be some point that some of this is going to be protected information by the company that originally developed it. So, Tom, I ask you this, what is your goal on this? What is the goal of promoting today?
The goal of promoting today is by keeping our, 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 across the nation, to put up a gap and bring in tourists and bring in outside.
So what is our biggest funding source?
Our biggest funding source, that is, yeah.
Now, what I'm saying, what I'm trying to say is, this is fundamentally how we promote today and how we develop a basic fundamental sound sense of that tape, right? That's, that's my, it's just like a business, we're, we're a business, so we're trying to promote the business that I hear. So, okay, I don't, I don't agree, I don't know, I'm, I'm just, what are, what are our goals? We're promoting, we're saying that this picture, we're gonna generate a four percent increase in sales tax, it's very important we do that, maintain that, to do what we're gonna do with salaries and crosswalk and all these, uh, those are the items we have, okay? So, it's important that we develop a, a client base to support, and that's our goal, I think that's my goal with this.
Absolutely.
We're just saying though, if we can get more bang for our buck, we should absolutely look at it and see, you know, that's.
I don't, I don't agree with that at all. I'm not a business, but I think, but your basic element, we could do more of this in house, and I'm trying to structure this in my mind, how could we do this more in house? For example, the key, key players.
I'm, I'm thinking we do a lot of this already. But just the public relations, that's a large meeting.
I mean, we all, you know, we as the council are, we do P R work every day.
Yeah.
I mean, I agree with it.
Yeah.
And I just want to make sure that we, we maintain a level, but, I mean, I, I, I've never had a original idea in my life, and, and I look at people that are successful and, and classic days of, that is McDonald's. They're very consistent, and, you know, they establish a brand, and they promote it like you can't believe, and they consistently have sales increases along with any given year. Have very few failures. So that's, that's my, I'm, I'm a business, looking from a business perspective.
But I want, but my idea is, I agree that we look at other avenues.
Yeah, I don't have other vendors, that's, that's, that's okay, okay. But to put it back in-house, is there a story, I would read with the seven-five thousand in there, and people could kill some different things. If that's what we're gonna do.
No, I, I, I would, I just would like to give the other company, and if there's other companies, the opportunity, you know?
We did, we did, we got the post, yeah.
For this one, now that was a couple of years ago, right?
Yes, I'm just saying, we did, we did go out, you know, and I. Truly, this entire branding effort, yeah, I mean, just, where's, when, when you, you went out for this entire proposal, for the branding effort, and they've developed branding at this point, developed media at this point, at, at what point can you change horses? And, and Tom, or Jeff, the Jeff point?
Are we failing with this?
How much can you use when we do change horses?
Are we failing with this concept?
Oh, I, I don't think so at all, I think everything we could produce, the, the things we've seen are very effective. But that's the other problem, too, how do you?
I think we can do better, I think we can improve it.
Yeah. I think for, I, younger generation, you know, a little bit, this, I think we could make it a lot better.
I agree, exactly.
Sometimes when you're, you're trying to capture, the, the, we were trying to capture everybody, so we're wanting to use analogy that aim toward the younger generation and generation of about thirty-five, forty-five, and it's gonna be, you're gonna have to do that, think better with what we have.
You know, I can't, I can't make that assumption, it's something that, obviously, I'm not gonna be able to do, but council's gonna be, gonna have to make that right decision. So that's what you, that's your goal, that's what you want to do, is everybody on board with that?
But it's safe, but it's safe.
Right.
The second item I had is, I want to look at animal control e-ticketing.
Animal control, sorry?
Animal control e-ticketing.
Okay.
I think we had it in there for two, what, eleven, um, my initial thought was, they do a hundred each year, that's maybe two a week, I don't know, I don't have the quality. Sometimes when you're, you're trying to capture, but, but we were trying to capture everybody, but we're wanting to use analogy that aim for. The younger generation and generation of about thirty-five, forty-five. And we're gonna be, we're gonna have to do that in better way. What we have.
You know, I can't, I can't make that assumption. It's something that obviously I'm not gonna be able to do. But council is gonna be, gonna have to make that right with this. So that's what you, that's your goal. That's what you want to do. Is everybody on board with that?
But it's safe, it's safe.
Right.
The second item I had is I wanna look at animal control e-ticketing.
Animal control, sorry?
Animal control e-ticketing.
Okay.
I think we had it in there for two, what, eleven? Um, my initial thought was they do a hundred e-ticketing. That's maybe two a week. I don't know, I didn't have the quality.
The only thing, I'll tell you, in my perspective on that, we've had a lot of criticism from animal control for not doing their job. And if, if this will make them more effective, this, this will be a benefit from them. And it, it, you know.
I, I guess I would also say, last meeting you approved.
In that order, my initial thought, yeah. I don't know, I, I hate to insert myself into something that doesn't have to do with my department, but.
Uh, the, the one thing that e-ticketing brings is that so all tickets that are issued from the, from any part of the city. Are entered by our records division into the system for the city attorney to prosecute. So the value e-ticketing does play for us is it streamlines that, streamlines that process. So when that, when that code enforcement, animal control or police officer enters that ticket, we're not repetitively repeating that entry, data entry. So the value does go a little bit beyond that. Again, apologize for inserting myself into it. When, when I look at it for my department, knowing that somebody from my department's gonna have to re-enter all that information, it does have some value, if that helps the conversation.
Um, I have a question on line seventy-eight, Calvin. You said, I think you said something about you could take money from some of those trucks and.
Yes, no, it's, uh, the street department, uh, also has a flatbed truck that they are replacing. And so basically what we would do is we take the old one and transfer it to the, to the cemetery. As we replace and, we replace it with a new one. Now, when we get to transportation, that's probably not in the book, so.
Well, then I guess I ask, Roger, is that something that you think would work for what you wanted to use it for?
It will definitely help. The truck that we're using currently right now, uh, Mike and I swept it already. That if the inmate program goes through in April, we don't have any money with the bus to go get it. And I've got one guy to drive a bus. That's it. That truck will take us around Tifton in fact, with the oil leak that's going on front end. And it's, it's so much.
So this would shoot about four hours.
But you, you wouldn't drive that truck to Tifton anyway?
Possibility, because it will hold five guys and I don't have to have a hatch and your doors to drive it and drive it like a bus. That's where I'm at. His bike is off, uh, on vacation. And now that means I have no other to drive up and go get the inmates last night.
Who transports the inmates for the fairgrounds?
The state.
The state does? I wonder if they let?
With my forces, forces will not cross down and take another fairground.
They will not. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Calvin, just real quick, put the check mark in there and let's see what the percentage change is. Okay, let me take my.
Anybody else say they have?
So, let me, we are in a position where we need this and, but, so the one thing I'm lost on is an endorsement, passenger endorsement sixteen or more, right? How many inmates do we move?
Twenty is on the bus.
On the bus?
Yes. And because it's a twenty passenger bus, it requires.
Yeah.
It's a light. And I had all my guys at one time that were qualified to drive that. I'm down to one.
Okay.
So, but, but the Tifton contract, if you remember, we just dealt with that and it says up to fifteen inmates.
Right.
Right. But most of the time, we're not in that same spot.
Okay, so that answers my question. So, so this vehicle would be helpful if you didn't have somebody there, you could go get it.
A truck.
Okay, up, yeah. All right, I was, I couldn't get all the numbers for it. That makes perfect. Perfect sense now, I got it. I just didn't think if, if we got this truck, it would help if you needed fifteen all the time. I understand that. I had to be reminded that it was up to fifteen.
Okay, wait a minute. So the, uh, the idea of transferring this piece of equipment from public courts to cemetery, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
How soon are we gonna?
See, the bus was a great thing back when the bus was huge, the inmate program also.
Yeah.
Because if we were not just transferring forty-five thousand, we were up to ten, twelve thousand.
Yeah, okay, I finally got where I understand. So we don't use other buses to Tifton very much anyway, right? Yeah, okay.
So what do you use now?
Nothing, because they haven't taken anything.
So you, so the last time you used the bus was when we were still using the inmates, okay.
So if I, really, what we need to do is just replace the bus with the passenger van.
Yeah.
But that's not this. But this is.
Budget is.
But we can't handle that if they end up out of there, we might have, we have a couple of nurses.
Well, you might. Okay.
Everyone who's been driving a bus needs, needs a bus. I do have a bathroom door.
So, are we on board?
Yeah.
Next, I need more questions about this. This seems to be a common here. Everybody good?
Good. Any other changes? Do you wanna go?
I think we're pretty much good, I think we're on.
Okay. Y'all happy with being at sixty-three point seven, fifty-three point seven percent? And what's our goal?
Thirty-five to seventy-five, right?
Yeah.
Last year was sixty-four. I'd click that forty thousand just in case. I don't wanna not be able to go get help. Just see what the percentage, Jeff, was at, what, what did it change to?
We'd come back. If, if we're trying to justify if we're going to get an inmate, it's, it's not flatbed truck.
Right, yeah, yeah.
And I agree, usually they, we need a, we have that inefficient bus out and we need to get a passenger van.
We'll take the bus out for Brian and Melody and hand it stolen, like the Hummer, and we'll get it.
So we're on target now? Ready, boss?
Okay, transportation, uh, right now we're at six hundred and six thousand dollar loss. Uh, of course, our expenditures over revenues, not lost. Uh, spending down reserves to get us to a little over a million dollar reserve. Um, and then, uh, that ends up right at twenty-one point four percent. Uh, as far as ongoing revenues, I targeted thirty-five percent. Again, we're, we're replenishing these reserves over time, uh, uh, from reaching out to our extended to get to the hangar. And I'll show you really where the majority of this comes from here in just a minute. Uh, so going down through here, we have the increases, the wage increases, and then the increase to get to the cove. It makes sixty thousand dollars worth of difference in the, uh, uh, in the transportation, or in the, yeah, transportation fund. Uh, I'm sorry, I skipped the, uh, increase of the four percent, so that really offsets, uh, more than offsets the increase to get us to the five point seven percent cove. Uh, the, uh, the only two things that were, I'm sorry, the materials for the new sign, um, Derek, uh, with his expertise and abilities. He can basically kept safe the parts for the signs that we took down that were from Pro Energy. I know I sound gross. Um, he, he saved the, uh, parts for the signs that, uh, the Pro Energy hangar signs were up there. And, uh, and then with the, the new printer that in the street department to make sign. He thinks he can, uh, utilize that, use those parts and, uh, with a few more materials, he can put up another sign, uh, or other signs for the, uh, for the airport with twelve hundred dollars. So that's included in the, in the draft. The only two things that were really, um, uh, ranked in the strategic planning were the parallel taxiway and then reconstruct the five-two-three one-way. And, uh, both of those, we gotta wait till we're done with the, the hangar before we can get those grants on. So we're really two or three years out before we can realistically look at any of those. They will be in the five-year capital increase. Street department, we have a mosquito spray in at five thousand dollars. The, this is the big item that, uh, I really kinda wanna talk to you about is, um. Brenda had, uh, Brenda and Justin have put together a proposal to lease out, uh, some equipment. The, uh, so the miller and the asphalt to do our own milling overlay. Um, uh, and so when we got in the discussion, when we were going through that, we talked about, well, what would happen if we just purchased that equipment? And so they came up with the pricing at seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars to purchase a bigger, bigger miller than what we currently have. Currently we have attachments that go on skid steers that'll do forklift at a time. And this, uh, this milling equipment is basically what the people that we contract out with, what they, they have. And then, um, uh, and then a larger laydown equipment machine that actually is more automated. So it, it can do the, uh, uh, the service and the elevation more on an automated basis to, to really build streets on our own and do the milling overlay. We did some rough back of the neck calculations and it looks like if we spend about a million dollars a year on asphalt, uh, projects. Then, uh, that would have a payback period of about three years of what we would save on, um, on those projects or stretch those dollars further. So what I'm recommending and what I put in the draft is to purchase that piece of equipment and did not include the lease for the two months. The lease for the two months was a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. And part of my concern with the lease is, you know, you can have two months where the majority of it's raining. You know, you're, you're, you're just about that. And then also you're trying to schedule that. Whereas if we own the equipment, then really we, you know, weather permitting, we can, we can go all summer long, uh, with projects and, and do them on our schedule. Uh, and again, if we know we have the equipment, they can get ahead with the milling machine a little bit and, uh, and, and then come back with the, with the overlay. So that's what I'm recommending. I don't know Brenda, if I left anything out of that conversation or, Mary, you were involved in that conversation as well. I think you were on the phone too.
So that, this is how I am a councilman, Justin's part of the.
I think this is very important too, after a limited discussion that we have in the budget.
Now, it is, you know, the, the, uh, that leaves the, uh, the fund balance down at twenty-one percent. Again, that's still, you know, it's still a pretty healthy rainy day fund. And again, when you overlay it on, in total, we're at a nine point four million dollar in the general fund as backup plan. Because anything we do in the transportation, we can also do with general fund. So if we get ourselves some two days of travel, we can utilize general fund. Right, so. Everybody, everybody good with that one?
Yeah. That's a better return on investment than having sitting here some kind of, I don't know, you. But, um, all of this, we might get more interest rates coming out like that.
Yeah, well, and that's a double edged sword. If interest rates go up, everything else is gonna add, so. Um, Jersey barrier frames or molds, uh, this is forty-three hundred dollars that will really give us the equipment to where we can make our own Jersey barriers. And I, you all know what the Jersey barriers are. They're, they're concrete deals that, that, uh, uh, really make barriers so that you can't drive through. So we use them at the Christmas parade to where we block off alleys and places. So we didn't have idiots driving through the, through the parade, so.
Let's talk and take money.
Yeah, yeah. Street sweeper, uh, this was a, uh, huge number, but, uh, the mechanical street sweeper that we have is, uh, is down. We have two street sweepers and, and the one is down. And from what I understand, it's basically got a blown engine. And I can't remember the number it would cost to, to rehab it. It was like twenty thousand dollars and then it was still gonna be a twenty-year-old machine, so.
That's the oldest we have.
Yeah, but the oldest, uh, street sweeper.
That's right. Not talking about me.
Yeah, it's not quite. So that's two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars and at this point it's included in the draft. Um, street department recommended our proposed two, two high close skid steers. We have included at this point one in the draft and one, uh, I had, uh, proposed to delay to, to try to get that, uh, seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars worth of, with, with the milling overlay. Same with the dump truck plow and spreader. I was hoping we could maybe, uh, do that another year, uh, delay that another year. But it's, I can't remember what year it's replacing, uh, ninety-nine? Ninety? Okay.
Ninety, ninety-eight.
Ninety, okay. Um, so again, trying to, trying to stretch that another year so that we could get, uh, the, uh, but if you all were comfortable with, um, spending reserves down further. Uh, we could put that in and that's basically it would get us down to seventeen point three percent, seventeen point four percent. Uh, stump grinder, uh, at ten thousand, two hundred, again, uh, proposed to delay that hammer and.
So you told me today how much stuff were behind?
We started the year with around three hundred because we had such bad weather a year ago. So we tend to leave those in the ground for about six months, three years. So we've been working to act in this year and I think you told me today we're down to about a hundred and ninety.
And this is an added stump grinder, I mean, what you proposed.
It will go on that high and low machine and it will do a better job than the one we currently have.
So this doesn't leave us without, it's just not adding a more efficient machine. Hammer and bracket for the skid steer, uh, and attachments for the hypo skid steer.
That concrete breaker?
Solar LED flashing signs for Romania and Kentucky at eleven thousand that is currently included in the draft.
Can we go back? Do we have the ability to break concrete now?
We've got one breaker and it's large, but it goes up different units and it's inefficient. They need one better. We've been leasing one when they need it to break foundations up demolition and sturdy water, wastewater. I'll use that same breaker, that's why we were waiting one in the back.
This is a Bobcat accessory that we're, that hammer and breaker. Yeah, skid steer, okay, yeah.
It's not for a Bobcat.
We're, we're ready to leasing there.
Sorry?
We're leasing and leasing there now.
We, we have one that is a huge unit that doesn't fit in where we sometimes need one. And we have a small one. You know, it, it's kind of like the three bears, never have a size you really need. The one that should've been purchased is a mid range breaker so that you can take it on demolition lots and smaller areas on, and use it on a skid steer. Instead of a larger piece of equipment. So what we were doing was, uh, the one that we have in water is about forty years old, I think. And the one that is in the street is the small one. So we were trying to get one piece of equipment and then we were going to get rid of both the other breakers.
I'm not sure the leasing is working.
I don't have that in the top of my head, I'm sorry.
That old breaker is not a real safe piece of equipment. If I'm thinking of the one I'm thinking of, if it's the one I'm thinking of. Uh, too, I think that's another issue. So I can say click it and see what the percentage says, says that.
So what do you think, counsel, Mr. Clucker? Do we need, we need the hypo skid steer to win that too? Do we need, we need the high close skid steer to whip that through?
So we have one and we're gonna have one.
And we have.
Is it a clicker ready?
Yeah, it may not be a high close accessory.
Is it a clicker?
Is it?
Sure. Clicker for ready.
He's already clicked it, he must be.
Well, I know. We can unpick it. Keep it on?
Keep it on.
Okay. You break concrete on it, I mean, it's daily basis or nearly, don't we? Okay, breakaway. I, I would think it makes sense 'cause I, I know that, noticed that one piece. It's real.
Sixty-eight was.
And they're dangerous.
It says that main.
The older, the, the newer. The new ones are, is the different, yeah, they're just a whole.
The, the, you crosswalk there and now with the addition of the peaking trail.
So when the people walk over to the, uh.
Oh, snap. Yeah, that's being recorded. Yeah.
Move on, alright. Move on. Okay. Then we had, uh, proposed to lease another backhoe for the concrete crew to change it from a, or from a, currently we have an owned machine and, uh, moving it to a lease. I did not include that in the, in the draft, again, trying to make it through another year to get to that seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars worth of equipment.
What would be the cost of that? That would be roughly, and how about the next, the cost of what the backhoe would be roughly?
We're going with a smaller one, uh, that is more what the concrete crew needs. Backhoe's running there from eighty thousand to a quarter of a million dollars, but it's all based on size, so.
Yeah.
I have, I'll have to go back here.
Just wondering.
The new black hole that the, except water department choosing is.
The new.
Well, new is a couple of years old now.
The mini X. We got a mini excavator instead of backhoe for the water department because they work better in small spaces. So they're the right piece of equipment and they run, uh, a little, about a third of what a normal backhoe would cost.
This is the, replace the crew cab, uh, flatbed truck, uh, at forty-seven, seven, ninety-four. And again, I'm looking at delaying that to try to get that other equipment in. The lay down area fencing, drive and pad, this is the, the, along Third Street there and north of the, the current barn where we, uh, sold that property that we did use, did use for the lay down area. And, uh, part of the agreement when we purchased the property from Union Pacific was, is that we would put a fence, uh, to separate that property from the, uh, uh, from the rail right of way. And so this is the, the fencing, the drive and pad to add all of that in there. At four, one forty-six, seven, twenty-eight, um, and then, uh, replace the damaged siding on the street barn at twenty thousand dollars. And then replace the roof on the street barn at sixty thousand dollars.
Was this, well, how, I mean, I'm not being critical, just damaged by weather or was damaged still caused by?
We had an accident. We had, uh, as I understood, they drove out of the, uh, they had the arm on one of the sanitation trucks out and we're working on it. And we got to put it back up and it blocked position and drove out the door and tore apart the side. Um, it's been patched up for some time now, around.
Two years.
Yeah, so, and it's, so this is replacement, doing it right. Uh, the right of way maintenance, uh, the, replace the bad boy, bad boy mowers with two standups at sixteen thousand two hundred dollars. Cost sharing contract with Oath on the transit services at twenty-five thousand dollars. Replace the CIP reserves from the, for the hangar purchase at two hundred thousand dollars a year. And then typically we transfer some money out of, uh, to, uh, out of transportation to help offset some additional street department, uh, street overlays and things like that. And this year I'm proposing that we don't do that. Uh, again, trying to get that seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars worth of equipment so that we can, uh, pay that back over time. Anything that we wanna change on this one, go back and look at? Or you wanna go to the, to the big one, the CIP?
I'm good.
Okay, do it.
Okay. Capital improvement plan, um, again, we're at two point six million dollars spending down of reserves to get us to the one point six million, which is, uh, at forty-three percent. And I've targeted at a forty percent here, so, um, we're in good shape here on this. Get it on the one screen there. Sales tax again is a two percent, is what's in there. I'm suggesting that we take that to the four percent, that adds another sixty-eight thousand dollars in seven twelve. That's the only thing that I've got in here that's different than the, uh, than the, uh, what I showed you in the draft. The alley reactivation came in at number six in your rankings at five hundred thousand dollars. I put in alternate funding level of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, to, uh, try to get it started there at two hundred and fifty. Again, we can put it back at the five hundred if that's what you are comfortable with. The parking lot at second in Osage and Pacific in North Ohio and third in Osage ranked number nineteen at forty thousand. So it is not included, number twenty-three with the monument and wayfinding signs, uh, carryover from this year at two hundred thousand dollars and it ranked twenty-third. So it is not included in the draft. Katy Trail Bridge painting, I did not even have you all rank that one and it's not included in the draft. I still think we can do some alternate that's gonna be a whole lot cheaper than that. I just, uh, haven't got that figured out yet. Storage drainage projects, we lumped all of that together and, uh, at a, at a million dollars and it came in at number six. And so I split that out between the next three projects and put the first, um, the highest rated project in there at, uh, at this point at six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. I also put a note out there, Brenda is, um, is working on applications or applying for grants. Uh, actually, I'm not sure that you haven't already submitted some of those for the ARBA funds for the state. And, uh, of course, if, if she's successful in getting those grants, then we can do all of this. So, and we'll be able to take some of this back out and reallocate it to something else. But at this point, um, that's, that's what I've put in there at, at this point. And again, we can change that if you all want. The first project is the East Eleventh Street in South Montgomery. The sidewalk restoration, uh, that was ranked number one and that was the million dollars plus, uh, and that's assuming that we get CEDG funding, uh, for five hundred thousand of that for a net of five hundred thousand dollars, which is, uh, what we're, uh, of the ongoing, is that we've been doing over the last few years. As we were going through it, um, the budget, we also added another hundred thousand dollars to that to get us to one point one million. And the reason for that is that all of that million is, is dedicated in one place and we know that there's gonna be some other needs for sidewalks. So we just didn't wanna, uh, uh, cut it out altogether. So we put a hundred thousand in there again, we can take that out or keep it in as, as you all decide.
Wait, wait, wait. The million is not physically one, it's across time like it always is.
What, yeah, what if, the million is, the way we did the grant, is it's all in one area. Because when you do that grant, you have to show the low to moderate income, uh, percentage being served. So we had to show that one area that, uh, that, that fits that for that grant.
Because we had the area, do you remember this?
I, yeah, I'm trying to remember back through.
But I can't, what's the area?
It's, uh. Oh, again, it's, it's, uh, on the east side of town, uh, it's around, uh, New York and Emmett, around Fourth and Fifth Street, Sixth Street. It's kind of that section of, of, of area. Is that, am I, did I get it right?
It's the simplest track that contains that area. Generally from engineer to, to, to tracks down the broadway. But the, the grant is focusing on the three, three years development area.
So, you good?
Yeah.
The sidewalk sixty-five highway from Seventh Street to Liberty Park Boulevard ranked number four, so that is included in the draft. Sidewalk State Fair Boulevard, Fifty Highway to Third Street to Sixty-five is ranked tenth and is currently not in the draft. So Bike Way, Third Street, Katie Depot to Liberty Park is, uh, was ranked number fourteen and is not included in the draft. The complete street sixteen to New York to Limit, as discussed in the comprehensive plan, is ranked number sixteen and is not currently in the draft. Bike Way, um, from the Amtrak Depot to the Katie Depot is ranked number seventeen and is currently not in the draft. For the street projects. We've got chip and seal two hundred and fifty blocks. This is kind of our ongoing, uh, chip and seal maintenance at three hundred thousand is included in the draft. Thompson Boulevard tenth to Second Street, or Sixteenth Street, I'm sorry, is ranked number two and is included in the draft.
Will that affect the asphalt? Good?
I don't think it's gonna, you don't have it, you don't have it fixed.
We had a discussion that Thompson was coming back to be done, redone this year. Sorry. I have a formula in my box there.
Okay. So back to the question, is Thompson going back to asphalt or are we gonna be chip sealing the deal or what's going on with Thompson Boulevard?
The budget says steam can is to mill and overlay, uh, but that would be contractor work because our intent is to put a ground back in to Thompson Boulevard so that it adequately drains. That's why you can't keep striving on as good as Tom. Fly ice builds up on it so bad during ice and snow events. So we'll re-ground it, we'll build a curb and gutter above somewhere where it won't throw into homes. I know that Tom talked to some people that's worried about it. We need to get the engineer back out and confirm how we're going to manage all that. But by putting the ground back, the markings will stay in place and we're putting thermal plastic markings down instead of painting this time so that it lasts longer.
On, on the topic of the store water drainage issue for Thompson, do we need to make that a line item of the year or do we, how should we approach that?
I thought that was included in this number.
And is the store water drainage issue included?
No, because you brought that, there need to be a later. And the only drainage issue that I understood came out where there were two dogs that said they were getting some runoff right now off Thompson and everywhere.
My understanding is this is a prior role call.
Well, that's what I have to do and look at is, um, we haven't had any records called coming in indicating there's problems. The elevations don't indicate a problem, but it doesn't mean it doesn't happen. So we're gonna have to do that and see what we can figure out.
Okay, third and limit lane additions, this would be a cost share with MoDOT. And so what I put in there is the one point three million dollars and half of it. So we would contribute six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, uh, to a, really a MoDOT project. And that was ranked number six in your strategic planning. The Fifty Highway in Winchester lane additions was ranked number nine and is included in the, in the draft. Engineer Sixteenth to Twenty-Fourth Street came in at number eleven and that's basically where we cut off there and so that is not included in the draft. Clinton Road Grand to Thirty-Second Street, number twelve. Winchester Expansion Sixteenth to Sacagawea, number fifteen. North Harding and Boonville Upgrade Route Highway Fifty to Airport, number eighteen. State Fair Boulevard Main to Pro Energy Drive with Roundabouts. That was ranked number nineteen. And, uh, so what we did is we, uh, we split that one point six million dollars up into what it's, uh, what it would take to just do the resurfacing as a milling overlay at, uh, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars and we do think that that's important, so, uh, put that in the, uh, in the draft. Again, uh, you know, council wants to, uh, change that, we certainly can. And then, uh, separated out the dollars for, uh, what it would take to do the, uh, roundabouts at Main and then also at Pro Energy and Cherry Tree. Traffic light at sixty-five in Sacagawea ranked number twenty-one at four hundred thousand dollars. Fifty Highway, Katie Trail, overclass widening and cost share with MoDOT at twenty-two. The toll project, uh, was ten million dollars. I don't know what really we could work out with MoDOT, but it's, uh, ranked twenty-second, so we didn't, uh, didn't include anything in the draft. Sixty-five Highway ramp at Main, cost share with MoDOT again, uh, that did make it on MoDOT, uh, on the PAC committee's number four. I think it was, uh, overall project, uh, but, uh, again, it was ranked twenty-fourth in your alt ranking, so we didn't put anything in there for cost share. Pro Energy to Oak Grove, uh, ranked number twenty-fifth, absolute last and at two point five million and it's not included. The downtown lights purchased and changed to LED ranked number thirteen at four hundred and fifty thousand dollars and is not included in the draft. The fire engine, um, is, uh, we are at the point where, uh, really it needs to be ordered this year. It's at its fifteen years, right?
Yes, sir.
And, uh, so basically the way those work is that it wouldn't actually happen until our receipt, until the actual next fiscal year. They take like fourteen months to get.
Yes, sir.
But what you do is, is you pay for it upfront and we get a huge, uh, sideboard of that work upfront. So the seven hundred and fifty thousand would come out of this fiscal year's budget, but we wouldn't actually receive them until next year. And then the fire squad trucks with equipment, um, uh, that ranked number three on your alt ranking. Uh, when you do add in all of the equipment, we ranked it as four hundred thousand dollars and that was just for the trucks. But when you put all of the equipment that it takes to equip it, then it's, it's five hundred and twenty thousand dollars. What I did is, is I said, uh, put in an alternate to do only one truck this year and that's what is included in the draft. And I, as I understand, Mr. Nelson wanted to address counsel on this issue. And I don't know if you all know, Josh Nelson, he's the president of the local.
Yeah, so, so thank you for hearing me out. Um, I didn't know when quite the right time was to stand in front of all of you and kind of voice some concerns. And I want you to know that Local One oh three believes in working with city administration and the fire administration. And this fire administration, I've worked under three, as union president, it's by far the best, uh, administration we've had so far. So these concerns are not a direct dig at our own administration, they're just concerns of the local. You know, they, they have a job to run the department, do what's best for the department. We are the guys on those engines, we are the guys running the calls. So this is a couple of thoughts with squads. Like I said, I am the president, um, I, I'm the voice for thirty-nine people. Some different things to. Some different things to look at. We're considering squads because they said they're more affordable than fire engines and easier to maintain. But the calls we run and so on, uh, some of the concerns we have are a lack of maintenance program, or a, a lack of a maintenance program. And why our current trucks aren't being maintained the way they should. Like I said, I know Chief Irwin has done the best that he could along with Shaw. But we've had trucks catch on fire, break down in the middle of the street, be completely out, um, and the running reserve engines quite a bit. Like I said, I don't believe this is any fault of the fire, our fire administration. But if we add more trucks to put a Band-Aid on, we don't have a maintenance program, they're gonna break down as well. It's not cost savings if we're not adequately maintaining our stuff. Uh, another thing is right now, if we go to these two squad models, we are going to do it with our current staffing. And current staffing right now, we're going to pull firefighters off fire engines. If you think about that, we're gonna go to two main engine companies and pull firefighters off fire engines. And I know Mr. Shaw has done extensive research and there are things out there that it works in certain rural and urban combination volunteer departments. But with us, i- it's scary as can be. If, I, uh, I'm a recent fire captain, but I've been running a seasoned officer for about five years now. I have a one-year-old son and a three-year-old daughter. If I look behind me and I don't have anybody behind me to go in, it's a scary thought. I mean, NFPA seventeen ten writes the standard on current staffing, the staffing that needs to be considered, which they say four, basically for our jurisdiction, and five on an engine. What the locals, um, want to present is be adding six more firefighters to our current staff and then putting two additional guys on each shift. And that would give us a three-man engine company and a two-man squad. You know, that's at least giving us one person. I know sometimes it's easy, like Mr. Bliss, you said, yeah, they're a great idea. Yeah, I mean, we think so too. We're not against squads, we're not against running them. I mean, we understand the type of calls we run, but we're scared of, is that what if, the what if, when the engine is here, or the squad is here on this call, they're at Centennial Park and we run a call on North Grand and we show up with two firefighters? And yeah, there's that thing that, well, you're gonna have people coming soon. Yeah, we will, but what the scare is, is we pull up to that house and we're told, hey, there's someone in there, my baby's in there, my dad's in there, my mom's in there. We're going in and we have nobody out there to back us. You know, and there are, there are policies written that you, you make that choice and you do it. And the two in and two out rule is ideal, but it goes out the window at times when you're performing a rescue. But it's just scary trying to think of going in and performing a rescue with nobody outside to cover what you're doing. You know, if you had a captain and then you also have a firefighter behind you, your, your engineer is still outside, he's getting you water, he's doing whatever you might need to do. So like I said, this isn't, um, anything, we kind of, the locals have been talking about it and we had a meeting on Saturday. And the local unanimously disagrees with two main engine companies. Like I said, we understand our fire administration has a job to do and they've done a great job at it. And this isn't a dig at them, this isn't a dig at the city. It's just a time for me to be able to stand in front of the council and let you know our thoughts and our concerns. So thank you for, uh, having, giving me some time. You guys have any questions about anything? All right.
Keith, could you come up and, and I think you're an advocate for this, explain the logic.
So, um, I apologize, this was, I... I didn't know this was coming, so I apologize. Um, excuse me. So to begin, issues with two-man engine, two-man squads, you know, even in the presentation that I gave to you guys, you know, when we were looking at going to third stations, going to a single squad in this budget year. We don't know if it's gonna work. We're hopeful that it will work and we, we kind of did that. So we're gonna run a test phase with the two-man engine, two-man squad with single, um, still uses with a four-man engine on the cent, east side of town, um, and keeps us with a secondary ladder truck. Um, but some, maybe you may not, I, I know Mr. Shaw, we discussed this in, but our ladder truck performs all the capabilities of a fire engine, um, except it has a ladder on the top of it. So, you know, even if the squad was out with a two-man engine, you've got two-man trucks going as it is. The same point could be said is that that four-man engine company was over on Katie Circle or out on Craftsman Drive and we caught a house fire over on Spring Street. That's a two-man ladder truck going over there. So should then we pull a firefighter off that engine, put them on the truck and go to a three-man truck, three-man squad? These are all things that could be discussed and, and I was hoping maybe that we would have discussed it or something that I could have brought to you and said, hey, we need to change our thinking. The two-man engine, two-man squad is, is, is really, when we get to third stations and we add staffing, we're at fourteen, because we're currently running nine, uh, ten man. Ten man recommended staffing. So we staff ten people every day of the week. When we go to a third station where we're really gonna implement the squad and we're really gonna put them into effect, we've already asked for additional personnel. So that puts us to a fourteen minimum staffing with, um, eighteen per shift. So we are adding, we are looking at adding people. I, I mean, I really can't, can't argue because I, I would have to go down and really sit down and look at where we want staffing. I, you know, I've, I've discussed this with everybody at the union or at the fire station that wanted to listen. And here I am. So, um, as far as, I don't want to argue and publicly get on to our maintenance program or anything like that. We have a fleet maintenance, we've had a fleet maintenance work on the, the fire truck that happened to catch on fire here that they're talking about, and we did. Um, we had a breaking issue with a fleet maintenance came over and looked at it, they over-adjusted the trucks. They went on a call and it burned the rear drums off the back of the truck. So I get, we, we, we have a fleet maintenance, we try to get them coming through and I can't, I can't argue that. And I, I would, I mean, if you would like to have a meeting run up or go into the maintenance program, I'm, I'm happy to do so. But I don't, really don't think it's open for public debate or forum.
I guess I would add to that from my perspective is, is, you know, if you think about this logically, you're still getting the same number of people to a fire. They're just coming in two trucks.
I, I, I agree. I, I see what the union side of this is, is that you've got a two-man engine that could possibly be over on the east side of town. And if that squad is, happens to be over by Centennial Park and they catch a fire on the northeast side of town, you have a driver and an officer on that engine. And two people you can't do a whole lot of firefighting with. You can't affect a rescue. I mean, if, if it comes in as a trapped person, the driver and that officer are qualified to go in and back up and go and affect a rescue. And I get that it's scary. I've had young kids when I was doing this as well. We still have people coming and yes, there is a time delay for that. But we have to look at what we're doing as a benefit to the citizens of the city by being able to diversify and extend our, our reach.
But again, going back to that, that scenario, okay? So if that engine is out on a call right today.
Correct.
With our current structure, you've got that engine that's on a call with four people on it that's at Centennial.
That is correct.
Now you catch another fire somewhere else, what goes?
Well, it would be, so we do have, it would be the engines on the central fire, uh, headquarters. But we do have a, a, a standing policy that if we're on a medical call and the single firefighter can handle that call by himself. Now, if it's a full cardiac arrest and those four guys are working on it, that engine's, that engine's not coming. So we would be the, it would be the, the headquarters station. If it is a minor, I'm not feeling good, we could drop the firefighter and leave the firefighter there and take the engine across, which you were responding with a three-man engine.
Which again, you'd have the same scenario where you'd respond with the engine plus you'd send the, the squad with the one.
Correct.
So you're, you're still getting the same number of people to the same fire. Pardon? Yeah, and I'm just saying that, that logically, I'm, I'm trying to follow your logic there and it, and it doesn't logically, uh, hold true. Uh, you, you're getting the same number of people to the fire.
Yes, sir.
They're just coming with, in different trucks. And for, from a community standpoint, you've got better opportunity to get there sooner because you've got more opportunity to get a... Pardon me? It's, well, but adequate personnel for a, uh, medical call, you only need the two, right? But again, they can get there quicker.
Again, Mr. Shaw, members of the council with all due respect, I don't think this is the place to argue staffing and response vehicles in, in a public forum. Um, honestly, this should have been done in an office and discussed and then looked at a plan and then presented to you. And I apologize for this. Um, I thought I had a better read on this and apparently I did not.
I agree.
Thank you.
So what council want to do, do you want to leave it in and if it is, or you want to put both in?
Jeff?
I, I, I'm in agreement to go on with both. Um, you know, we've had this discussion many years now and we've been heading down this, this path to get there. But the comprehensive plan is coming out and the fact that we've got to look at more stations and like Matt would say, we're already kind of planning for the staff that's gonna happen. I say leave the two in.
Thomas?
I understand what, what, what Chief and Commissioner Shaw are saying. But I keep calling back to, to make this, the lack of, where the confidence of our fire bodies, when they step on the scene, not being able to come out of the house and not feeling that they're indecisive, just fully give their all when they step on the scene. I, I'm, I fall back on that. I don't know, I, I, I'm at the moment leaning towards not having it in. And because I would like to see the staff come first before we start adding.
Tina?
So are, are we, are we talking about instead of the two hundred and sixty, we're talking about putting the five hundred and twenty in there? Is that what we're talking about?
That's one option and the other option, well, I guess you've got, you've got both ways now. You've got Liam and advocating for the five twenty and you've got Oldham advocating for another.
Click it and show me what it's going to do, is that possible?
Percentages wise, that gives you thirty seven, thirty six point seven percent. I targeted forty percent. So it's one twenty seven below our target. But, and that's to help these fund balances, that's what you all are comfortable with? Lucas?
Well, is there a compromise at the beginning? And how, how actively do you think this, this, for that, could this be from? Do you guys can get together?
What the, what the local is advocating for is to add more staff. That would go back in the general fund to increase the amount of staff. I understand you're not advocating to not do the, the, uh, the squads, you're just advocating to add more staff.
Yes, sir. If you, you know, you had another one, we tried one, see how it works.
I also agree. I feel like we're, and this is not the time for that discussion.
Yeah, well, but two, two year answers are compromise.
Yeah.
Or including one sidewalk now and now you can, I don't wonder if I can do like, I shouldn't have a week of it. But technically I could pull one firefighter off each engine, which would give them three-man engine companies and we could staff two-man squad with current staffing.
But just giving you one other.
We, we had one squad to work with. We could pull one firefighter from each of our stations, one firefighter from the rest of our stations. Put them on squad and that would give them the three-man engine.
Yes, and that's the next item, this is to, uh, uh, to define, that that, that third station were two, probably three years out before we get to that third station. So what we were trying to do was is add a squad to transition to that third station. So that when you build the, uh, the new station, then you can put, you can deploy a squad there and, and start using that station. And then, uh, and you're gonna have to add an engine at that point. And then transition when you get your third of the station built, then, uh, then move that. I'm sorry, Chief Irwin's got it all the way down, transition plan.
So when you go to the, when you're looking at the three stations, okay? You have to, uh, the way I basically looking at it is, is that you need three fire trucks and three squads total. So if you're doing two, two-person for the fire engine, two-person for the squad, you're basically putting four people per station. Except for the headquarters station where we have a two-man ladder company that we're also staffing. So you have six at the fire headquarters, four and four, which is fourteen, which would be our minimum staffing. Now, we have discussed and I brought through to you guys in that discussion about adding staffing to go to that fourteen man. If you remember, we also discussed that hopefully in the future that we could put staffing on to add the third person to the engine companies after we're, we're, you know, five years down the road, four years down the road. Once we get everything going, seeing that's working and then adding it to it. Um, so we, we, in the strategic plan that I presented, it, it was put in there for that third person, for, for the, for the engines. Um, Deputy Chief Shaw travels to, um, Edmondsburg, Maryland, um, Monday morning, Sunday night, um, to sit on a safer grant review panel. Um, he was asked by the state of Missouri to sit on that thing. If you're not aware what safer grants are, basically that is a, um, staffing for adequate fire emergency response. Basically, it's the federal government's AFG grant, if you will, only for staffing. Deputy Chief Shaw's going to do that so he can figure out how to write a grant, what they're looking for, so we can do that. Part of the strategic planning that we talked about was, is applying for a safer grant to hire more people. Safer Grant pays for a hundred percent of the first year, seventy-five percent of the second year, fifty percent of the third year, twenty-five percent, and then you pay everything for the five after the fifth year for that employee. So that's their base salary. So those are the things that we are looking at and that was discussed and, and we're trying to get there. And you're right, if we, if we had an alternative method that we, this is something that honestly I would have preferred to bring to you with all of the facts and all of the numbers where, you know, how many times have we doubled up on calls? How many times are we on two, two house fires at the same time? Those are just statistics and facts that you deserve to be able to make decisions on whether or not we need to add six people right now, to, to be quite honest with you. And again, I would have loved to have had that, but I don't. So there are ways, there are workarounds, but this is something that needs to be done in an office that we can figure out a plan that works both, both for administration, the city of the city, and the local for, for our guys. And I understand wanting our guys to feel, feel comfortable, I do, I appreciate that. But there is, and I, I want them to be safe and I want them to feel safe. But we can't staff for every possible instance that could happen. It, it's quite often that we've, on occasion that we've had a number of house fires at the same time. Um, the other day when, um, at the beginning of the year where we had the house fire down the block, where we put a four-man engine company without air packs on. We can't plan for that, but it happens. So, you know, those staff members did their job in an unsafe, in an unfair environment and, but they did it. And it's not something that, we could what if and plan for, I mean, I could, I could spend every ounce of reserves you've got if you wanted to plan for everything. But we're trying to move forward, we're trying to get staffing, we're trying to do this in a step program. But to you, and if, yes, we could do it with one now and we, and we wouldn't have to add any staffing per se if we didn't want it. But we could put one squad in service.
And I, I guess to that point too, you know, it's like we talked about wages and we're struggling to get to the wages of, of where we're at. I'd like to double everybody's wages if we could. You, you can't do it, you know, I mean, there's just not enough money. You know, I mean, there's just not enough money there to do it. So, the more you spend on that, the less you've got to spend on the rate effect. So, it's all about that.
And when, when, when you're looking at hiring six staff, you're not just hiring base salaries. You know, you're looking at equipment, putting, putting them in equipment. You know, then now you're also looking at air packs. Um, if you're adding six additional, if you're adding two additional personnel to each, to each shift is basically what they're asking for. So, you're looking two people per shift. Bunker gear, which is about three grand a prop. I mean, it's, it, it, it's pennies when it comes to the grand scheme of things. But there are expenses that you're gonna have to look at that currently aren't in my capital improvement budget.
I agree with what Jeff said and, and I know down, uh, down the road, we're gonna need, as the city grows, we're gonna need other fire stations, we're gonna need other fire trucks. And we want our firefighters to be safe, we want the best equipment available for them. And like Mr. Shaw said, like she's dating, waiting stuff, but at the time, right, that we can't do that.
So, what are you advocating for this?
For what is that, any meaning?
Yes.
Yeah.
You're advocating for one squad unit?
Right.
David?
It concerns me that we, it sounds like we're having issues with proper maintenance on the trucks. It seems, I don't know, it just seems like that should be top priority. And adding a squad, if we're not doing proper maintenance on the trucks, I kind of have an issue with.
Well, and, and again, that's part of the reason for going to squad.
But you still have to do maintenance on the trucks no matter what.
Yeah, you still, yeah, you still have to do maintenance on the trucks.
That's concerning for me.
What we're doing is, is we're taking a $750,000 engine and that goes on the first medical call. You don't need an engine on a medical call. So, if you can take that squad for the first medical call, you're running that engine less and therefore uh less wear and tear on a $750,000 engine than you're putting on a $200,000 truck.
But we don't have squads now and we're not doing the maintenance that we need to do on those trucks and that, but that's the issue that we have. That if we're gonna add more trucks that need more maintenance and we aren't doing the proper maintenance on the ones, the $750,000 ones now, then that seems like that, you know, that's, that shouldn't be happening.
I, I guess I would question what, we're not doing the proper maintenance on the trucks now. I mean, we're, we have bought a women truck.
Okay.
I mean, we have had a bunch of troubles with, with one engine that we, the last engine that we...
Or two.
Engine two. Um, and, uh, and we have had a lot of breakdowns on that truck. And they're right, we've been right, running the reserve truck a lot because that truck's been broken down. I, I mean, it's not because we haven't been maintaining it, it's because the truck just keeps breaking down and, and we've had a lot of troubles with that truck. We have not been happy with that truck. Um, and we've had some, some issues with, uh, you know, the last, last deal, I think that's what you referred to was the brakes burning up on the truck. The truck, the brakes were adjusted and they were adjusted incorrectly and, and they burn up the brakes, okay? It wasn't because we weren't maintaining the truck or that we were trying to put Band-Aids on the truck. We just did it wrong and, and it messed it up, okay? So, we fixed it and it's, it's going off. So, I mean, it's not, I, I don't get the connection here that um, that adding squads is gonna, uh, gonna uh hurt the maintenance problem on the engine. It can only help because you're gonna be running the engines less.
Yeah, I understand that. I just was not, I guess that was an understanding, I, I, I thought Josh kind of mentioned that they weren't having proper maintenance now, so.
Well, yeah.
But, so my other concern is that when these guys go to a fire, if there's a child or they're just gonna go. And it, that is concerning that if they feel unsafe, I do, I am, that concerns me. No, 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 and I understand that, I totally understand that. But I, I just, I think that if there's concerns and we, we need to look at it more, maybe um the committee needs to look at some of that a little bit, perhaps, I don't know. Thank goodness.
I, I think part of that issue, if you go back in the history that I know about that happened with this way back when, the E1 engines have been women's both from that company. It's been tough getting parts from that company and some of the stuff is not even made anymore for that. I think there was a throttle body that was involved here. Whatever it was, yeah, okay. So, it's not that it's not being done. Yeah, there, there are many factors in this that play into that thing here. And that, can I continue a little bit here in, in regards to the, you know? I think this union needs to take a hard look at this council as to what we've done here in the past and just recently to make sure that you were covered. Things that were not brought, were not brought to our attention that we immediately reacted on in your favor. Just to make sure that that did happen. And I think what we're trying to do here is make things even better and take some of that, you know, you talk about the maintenance, but we're trying to help that out and try this squad situation. That's where we're kind of landed. It's coming in the future. You just be what it's coming. How we get there is how we, and now, and there's one more point that just really bothers me tonight is the fact that you came tonight at the last second when we've been discussing this since January. You've always had the opportunity to come to this council. That's not true.
My turn? We're headed to Hugh, right?
Are you done?
One, two, or none?
Definitely not all of them. Uh, I have issues with it, so I'll just move on to Steve. Not okay, yes.
All right, so I, I'm gonna say one, I'm gonna agree with Jeff, but I really have confidence in the union's hand leadership moving forward. Um, I want to remind you one thing Jeff reminded you of, and that is the number one priority in our budgeting process was to get uh the fire department situation. Answer the point is, I, what, I'm just seconding what Jeff said, you know? We really want you guys to go in, fight fires for us, come away with a good retirement. And the situation that we were in uh wasn't gonna be productive for young firemen in the long run with regard to retirement. So, uh, let's, I'm gonna say number one, I've got confidence in all you guys getting together, administration and union working this thing through. Because we can budget it right now, that doesn't mean that we can't. If, if you all come forward as a group and, and Chief comes forward and says, "Hey, we want to make some other type of adjustment," we're not uh blocked off from doing that, so I think the number one and go from there is what I was wanting.
So, it sounds like...
Uh, it sounds to me like consensus is just to do one squad vehicle with one...
All right, let's get started.
I have a question about the truck.
Uh huh.
Uh, being it was a lemon, has the company that we purchased the truck from come across with anything to help us out on it or?
Um, they brought up the price of the repair from given time, that an eighty percent increase in that cost, that's all they've done for us. The truck was 15 year old. When that truck was purchased, she was Kansas City firefighters, some official truck that were just like it. Kansas City received dollars, we kept ours. It, it was literally been one thing I thought that truck was breaking down and, and not working. And there'll be one more camera.
Say to do to press any key? Okay. There, I pressed the key. Okay. Uh, central fire replacements design, this is $500,000. It was ranked number five in your ranking. And um, uh, and uh, so this is the architect to design the three station model and it is included in the budget. The crowd control barriers that we talked about that I moved from the, from the uh general fund to the, the CIP, it's $61,000 and it is included in this draft. The replenish of reserves from the transportation for the hangar purchases included in, in this draft and no other transfers. So, um, you need...